Highlands. And so heavily on tourism as we all depend on that economy for our livelihoods and for essential public services. We have asked for this opportunity to speak because we believe a thoughtful process, one that respects all sides in the debate, is the best way to find a constructive path forward that serves the best interest of Highlands and everyone who lives here. Before we suggest a specific process, we think it is appropriate to acknowledge the challenges involved. They include the following, but we all know there certainly are others. Number one, the zoning practice at the heart of the current controversy, allowing STRs, vacation homes, whatever you want to call them, in R1 have been followed in Highlands, rightly or wrongly, for a very long time, some may even argue as long as forty years. Number two, an unknown but large number of individuals and families have invested substantial sums to purchase, renovate, or build residencies that are now used partially as STRs, and in so doing have relied upon the longstanding zoning practices. Number three, the challenges now posed to those longstanding zoning practices are not frivolous and are based on the text of the zoning ordinance, which the challengers believe clearly prohibits STRs in R1, while others, of course, reach different conclusions. Number four, it appears that litigation may be considered by challengers and defenders of the longstanding zoning practices. Number five, the Highlands economy depends substantially on tourism and on the expenditures of overnight visitors to our community. And number six, we currently lack reliable data to make reasonable predictions about the economic impact of changing the longstanding zoning practices, but we know what some of the questions around this are. Will the proposed changes reduce the availability of overnight accommodations and thus the number of local visitors? And if so, how will that impact tax revenues, sales tax, property tax, occupancy tax? And how will it impact the overall revenues of all of our businesses? If those tax revenues decline, will public services decline accordingly? Or will they have to be supported by other new taxes? If overall business revenue declines, how might that impact jobs and new capital investment in Highlands? Will the January third enforcement date cause a rush to sell properties used as STRs? And if so, how might that impact home values in the short and long terms? There are so many questions. Number seven is we have not fully examined options to the current zoning practices that are being challenged. For example, to address the concerns that have been raised, should Highlands consider revising the ordinance to permit STRs in R1, but with strict new rules backed by strong enforcement and approach suggested by some in Highlands and used successfully in other communities? The chamber is well aware that zoning disagreements often lead to litigation and that contending groups in Highlands are giving that serious consideration. Before anyone chooses that path, we hope the town will establish a process open to the participation of all that offers genuine promise of constructive compromise. So the question becomes, how do we do this? The design we suggest could vary, but the principles are familiar. The commission could create a special committee on STR zoning with the following or similar characteristics. For instance, the composition. Up to twelve members named by the mayor could include representation from the commissioners, the chamber, the groups favoring or opposing STRs, and other civic business and neighborhood leaders. The mayor could appoint a committee chair who is respected in the community and who has experience in meeting committees of this kind dealing with issues of public importance. And the town manager and attorney might serve ex officio. Sorry, Josh, more work. The mission of this group could be to consider all points of view, to gather information, data, and analysis as needed to inform the work of the committee. To give the public opportunities to input through hearings and otherwise. To review STR zoning systems in other towns of similar size where the economy depends substantially on tourism like Highlands. To consider all reasonable options and proposals. To develop a proposal to resolve the STR zoning issue in Highlands and to submit that proposal to the town for their consideration. The length of time this committee could work, the committee could report its findings and conclusions to the town within a reasonable period of time, possibly one hundred and twenty days. For support, ideally, the town would provide the committee with staff assistance and some funding to help with data collection and other assistance to the committee. If the town decides to create this special committee, there is one other action we would urge you to consider. To succeed in their mission, this special committee members need to believe they are free to consider all options, that none are foreclosed, that they are being given a real chance to bring the committee and our community together in the spirit of compromise to serve the interest of Highlands. The best way the town can give that assurance to this special committee would be to rescind, or at least temporarily, the decision to begin enforcement actions of the existing ordinance on January the third of twenty-two. If the special committee is not able to develop a solution for the overall STR zoning problem that the town finds acceptable in one hundred and twenty days, then the town can set a new commencement date for that enforcement if it wishes. We respectfully urge the town to create a special committee for this purpose. It may not succeed, but if it does, Highlands will be able to resolve this controversy without rancor, without creating lasting divisions in the community, and without expensive and unnecessary litigation. As we all know, people of goodwill will often solve seemingly impossible problems if they are given a fair opportunity, and perhaps nothing will be lost by at least trying. Thank you again for this opportunity to be heard on this matter of great importance to our community, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Kay, and I appreciate the statement from the Chamber of Commerce. Let me also emphasize that when we have public comment, we take all the, you know, statements and everything under advisement at that time and then process it and move forward from there. So thank you again for making this statement. With that said, do I have other public comments that would like to be made?
Yes, I have several with their hands up, so just give me a sec.
Okay, fine. Let me just say this. Since we're on Zoom especially, I'd appreciate everybody identifying themselves so we can enter that in the public record. And again, this statement went a little bit longer than three minutes, but I'd appreciate everybody holding their comments to three minutes. So the floor is open. Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Huff. And I would like to thank Ms. McCall for her comments that she just made. I'm actually going to make a statement on behalf of SaveHighlands.net. And because people have contributed so much to this campaign, I feel like we need to make this statement regardless if you've heard some points before. So again, my name is Jennifer Huff. It is unfortunate that the decision regarding whether or not Highlands should ban short-term rentals has been framed by some as us versus them or locals versus out-of-towners. This is not what this is all about. Those of us who have formed the Save Highlands group love Highlands, and we've been an integral part of this community for many years. That's why we've been coming here for decades and why we have purchased homes here. One of our member families has owned property here since the nineteen twenties. Others have repurchased and restored family property. In fact, I know of a property in their fifth generation. They've been a part of Highlands for a century. Indeed, the stories of our group's histories in Highlands are as varied as your own. We are Highlands too, and we want all of us to come together to ensure the town retains its charm and beauty for decades to come because we all love this beautiful mountain town. It is what draws people here, and those people contribute a substantial amount to our economy. In fact, we are ambassadors to the world for Highlands because we are the first contact for many of our wonderful seasonal visitors and families, and that's why we want to save Highlands. The contributions of short-term rentals to the local community are substantial. We could discuss occupancy tax and those who spend money in our restaurants and shops, and we know that it will be well into the millions. And that loss of revenue will not only harm property owners, many of whom have poured their life savings into their homes, but it will also be very devastating to our community, to the shops, the restaurants, the spas, I could go on and on. Furthermore, the banning of short-term rentals could be devastating to several of our neighbors. For example, we know a local woman who rents out her family home. She is eighty-five years old. The income that she is able to ride for herself, and what is she going to do after January third? Second, the matter, the second is the matter of property rights and whether or not the local government can tell any of us what we can and cannot do with our private property. Obviously, there are limits, and we seek to be good neighbors and citizens. But as long as someone is not violating the rights of others or endangering them, a private property owner should be free to enjoy and use their property as they wish. Many of the members of Save Highlands have invested substantially in their property to improve it. Never was there an indication from the town that short-term rentals were legal. In fact, many were told just the opposite. And the town continued to happily accept revenue from short-term rentals for many years. We have to work together to save Highlands from local government infringing on our property rights and from suddenly changing their interpretation of zoning laws based on complaints of a vocal minority. The community should be at the table when these decisions are made, and the decision should be based on analysis and careful study and not on emotion and personal bias. We appreciate the concerns that some residents might have regarding short-term rentals, especially if they've had to deal with unpleasant situations. But the evidence does not support the claim that short-term rentals are a systemic problem or a blight on our community. There have been recent claims that short-term rentals are having a negative impact on their neighbors. But prior to this unilateral decision to reinterpret the zoning regulations, the police department confirmed that there was not a record of any violations by short-term rental owners. Most vacation rental homeowners are responsible. We want to have good relationships with our neighbors, and many of us already have those great relationships. We live here too. None of us wants to rent to disruptive or thoughtless guests, and a few incidents of poor behavior of unresponsiveness does not reflect the status of vacation rentals as a whole. Let me close by saying, I've been a property owner and visitor of Highlands for many years. I actually got married there, and I love it. But this is the first time I can ever recall feeling unwelcome in a community that I love so much, and that fact saddens me the very most. Please talk to your neighbors if you have a problem or a concern, and let's get past the social media mentality of name-calling and the us-versus-them attitude that has developed. We all love this special place called Highlands. We are all Highlands because it's not merely a location, it's a state of mind, and I believe that all of us wants to save that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have other comments.
Mayor Taylor and Commissioners, this is Kathy Henson. I have owned a home in Highlands since two thousand and four on Satula Mountain. I have always believed that the zoning protected my husband and me from commercial activity in my neighborhood. I have never called the police about the neighbors that change every weekend where I live, because I don't think that is the best use of the police time in the town of Highlands. But every weekend, I have new neighbors. And every weekend, it's a new learning curve. One weekend, it's the neighbors who put the dog on the screened-in porch and let it bark all afternoon. The next weekend, it's the wedding party that's celebrating the wedding long after the wedding has ended. The next weekend, it's the birthday party for the sixty-year-old women who enjoy the fine wine and play Name That Tune until eleven o'clock at night. So as much as I hear about, well, we could just teach people to put the trash out and not be noisy, it's a learning curve that starts every Friday afternoon. I thank the town for agreeing to enforce the existing prohibition on short-term rentals in R1 zones. It's not that the town has suddenly decided to prohibit short-term rentals. It's the town has finally heard enough from the silent majority that something needs to be done to protect those property owners who don't want a hotel next door. So I thank you for what you've done, and I would only ask that as we move forward, we all agree on the problem we are trying to address, and that's not all short-term rentals or hotels in the town of Highlands. There are certainly zones for commercial activity. We are simply asking that R1 prohibit the use of private residences for commercial purposes. Thank you so much for being afforded the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Do we have another comment?
Hello, my name is David B., and I'm the owner of Highlands Vacation Rentals. I moved to Highlands thirty-plus years ago, opening the Sports Page Sandwich Shop with my then-business partner, followed by Hilltop Grill and the pizza place on Main Street. I'm married to Lori B., who is a local, and her dad worked for the town for thirty, over thirty years. I have managed short-term rentals since two thousand and five, when I received my North Carolina real estate license. At that time, most of the properties were located in Highlands Country Club and have since then grown my rental business to approximately ninety properties in the area, many of which are in the city limits. There is no way to even fathom the economic impact this decision will have on the town, but here are a few numbers from my own business. For two thousand and twenty-one, owners of properties that I manage in the town will receive approximately six hundred thousand dollars in revenue. How much of that will be lost to the town because they will now not longer remodel, purchase necessary items within the town from Reeves, from Bryson's, gift baskets from Kilwens, gift baskets from Bryson's, and other repairs that they need? My own office will lose approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in revenue. This is one employee that I cannot hire and one employee that I might have to release. My housekeeping staff will lose sixty-four thousand dollars. The Chamber of Commerce will lose thirty thousand dollars in occupancy taxes, and the town will lose twenty thousand dollars in sales tax. Additionally, I purchased lunch every day for my entire staff from a local restaurant in town, which totals almost nineteen thousand dollars a year. At Reeves, everything from light bulbs to toilet seats to Weber grills. I buy gas in this town for my four-accompany vehicles, as do my employees and housekeepers and repair people. The economic impact for this is far too significant to have the type of knee-jerk reaction that has been made without rational discussion. Please stop and consider all of the people that will suffer from this, from homeowners to the general workforce. For the three of you that are business owners, how would it affect you if one-third to one-half of your business was gone because of a decision that no longer allowed you to sell window treatments, to list or sell property, or to take care of hurting animals? Rethink this decision before the detriment is insurmountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hello, my name is Sean Doyle. We're in the Webmont community and a member of the Webmont HOA. My wife and I first discovered Highlands five years ago on an anniversary trip, where I got to go fly fishing with my brand-new bamboo rod as a celebration. Pretty great wife, I think. We, from then, have joined the community and love the Webmont Neighborhood Association. And just the other day, I shared that I'm excited my grandson will never know a day that he doesn't experience or get to participate in the Highlands community. I think the chamber, David B., Jennifer Huff, several people have talked about economics. When I first thought about this, I got together with a retired PWSC, excuse me, consultant who I think would be very helpful in this, and I would like to offer myself to the town, to any of the parties, to study the economy. Using the research that I've found from the last couple of days, using US Travel, using Penn State University, using Daniel Stein's research around impact of visitor spending on the local economy, I can offer at least some initial thinking around what might happen with the economy using very conservative estimates. I've been a businessman for thirty years, and I live on the conservative side of things. The calculation of final demand, that's the money that stays in the city that would not drive off the plateau or leave the county, including all STR rents and visitor spend, looks like it could be around a hundred and fifteen million dollars pulled out of our economy on January third. More importantly, perhaps, to everybody listening, would be the monies that get pulled out of exclusively our shops, our grocery stores, our gas stations, our restaurants. And that number, again, a final demand number, is around nineteen million dollars. That is money on Main Street. That is money with activities. That is monies that comes out of the non-STR crowd. And I love Highlands, although I'm a newbie, I love it. And I cannot imagine the place if we punish the restaurant owners, the Main Street participants in the commerce, to the tune of nineteen million dollars because this was not considered deeply. So I would love to be part of the organization that helps study this and bring some third-party, bring some data. There's a lot of data around the country because none of this is a new idea. Tourism and travel, the impact of visitor spending on local economies is a well-considered, well-researched, and relatively stable idea that we can find answers to. I'd love to be, allow myself to participate. I'll be glad to give my time to the town manager, attorney, commissioners, or the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment.
Yes, good evening. My name is Pete Lovelace, and I've been coming to Highlands for over thirty years, starting when I was age eight, with my parents, who ironically rented homes that I think this group would classify as short-term rentals. These were homes for less than seven days, certainly less than thirty days, in the R1 zones. So I find it rather ironic that we're having this conversation after I spent over thirty years staying in these homes and enjoying Highlands and really enjoying the lifestyle that all of us, I think, have come to love and appreciate and want to make sure remains intact. As homeowners now, one of my biggest concerns is that for many years, it seems that the real estate agents have knowingly supported, endorsed, and profited off the sale of homes in Highlands and endorsing them as short-term rentals. I experienced this personally, not more than two years ago when we purchased a home. And so I just, I think there's a serious issue at hand, and I'm not a lawyer, but there has been an ongoing precedent set for this type of investment, for this type of use in homes, and it's contributed to a great deal of people profiting, profiting, and earning money off of something that now all of a sudden has been deemed illegal activity. And that just feels very wrong to me. I support a lot of the comments made earlier. I think there does need to be some, some process in place to manage this, to respect the independence and the livelihoods of the people that live in Highlands and call it home. But I do find it strange that one of the key points that was made in the previous meeting to ban short-term rentals was in response to noise complaints registered from Airbnb's and short-term rentals, when in reality, there doesn't seem to be anything to substantiate that claim, at least on some level of significance. So there's just a lot of data points here that don't quite add up, in my opinion, to the response that this group of commissioners and mayor have taken to ban short-term rentals. And let me please go on the record that I am in support of some type of governance over this, because Highlands is a special community, and it's that way because people have intentionally cared for the residences and the township altogether. But I also think that there's some knee-jerk reactions happening here that are not only going to hurt the economy, but really expose some ignorance and some knowing wrongdoing that's been going on for the last thirty years that I just don't think we can immediately shut off. So thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hello?
Is it me?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Stephanie McCall. I own a business in town and a construction company, and I own some short-term rentals, and I also work with some clients that have short-term rentals. And I know the mayor asked us not to repeat anything that's been said. I am not privileged to know what has already been said or the emails that have been sent to you, so I'll apologize now to say if I repeat anything. First of all, I'd say, Donnie Callaway, thank you for thinking this through and not just jumping on and saying that we can't have them. My construction company, Allison Builders, I'd say the last ten projects, seven of them have been remodels for short-term rentals. We have used all local people to do our business. We've already had one of our clients stop a project because of the town's decision. They're disconcerned, so they've asked us to stop the project. I have two daughters that are raised here, and Highlands has given to them unbelievably and currently still doing so, as I have one at App State, and Highlands has given her generously scholarships, and she wants to come back to Highlands to work. Short-term rentals gives my children a chance to come back and work in this town that I love. So for me, it is important that we have a place for our children to come back to work. I recently purchased a house for short-term rental. When we purchased it, the real estate agent knew what we were looking for and what we were going to do with it, and they said that it would be the perfect place for it. I have a retail business. So many times when we have conversations with people and they come in, they're saying we're staying around the corner, we're staying a short-term rental. I have quite a few of them that I'm involved with, and I will say, I'm always amazed at the respect that they have for my house and for my business partner's houses. They take good care of them. If there ever is any kind of party or any... If there ever is any kind of party or anything, I certainly try to address it myself. We've not had those issues at all. I would just ask the town to think about what you're doing to our businesses, to our children's. It's very important to me that if my children want to live here, that they have a way to make a living. And it is a great income for myself, my building company, and my boutique daily have an income for it. My housekeepers are all local. All of the people that work in my construction company, either from Highlands or the surrounding areas. It's amazing the amount of economy that the short-term rentals affects the economy. So I am just here to say, please, think about what you're doing that it affects not only me, but my kids and other people's kids and all of anybody that runs a business in Highlands. I love this town and I certainly don't want to harm it in any way, nor do I think that we are. And I thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. And it's not like we're not willing to listen to what we might need to do if we need to make things better in any way. We should work together, communication. We should work together to continue to make our Highlands the best place it can be. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Any other comments?
Hi, this is Jeannie Chambers, co-owner of Chambers Real in Vacation Rentals with my husband Tucker. When I moved here in 1990, I started doing short-term rentals immediately. But my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Tony and Isabel Chambers, were already, had been doing them for decades before that. We rent residential homes. These are not businesses. They're not conducting businesses. They come and use the homes themselves a lot. And otherwise, they would be long-term rentals for people that live here, and we do those too. But I just wanted to say, and I won't take much time, I hope. This feels like a death in the family to us, to me especially. I've had a hard time. I don't expect most of you all to understand what that is, but some of our renters have been, they really do feel like family. We see them every year. At the proposed ban, most of these people won't be able to come to what they consider their home in the mountains. Some for over 35 years. They come for two and three weeks at a time. That's all they can do because they work off the mountain. And they know the houses they go to. They don't want to go somewhere else. I have one man who sent me an email and he said, he doesn't even feel safe to return to Highlands. He's been coming renting through us since 2002. But he says, why would I want to go to a town filled with such hate and animosity towards its visitors? He even feels like there might be a reprisal, like somebody would slit his tires. And I assured him that wouldn't happen. But I talked with somebody the other day who made a lot of sense, and you all, he's the person that lives here in town. And he suggested, and he didn't know if the town board had considered mediation. And you probably already have, but mediation would be a whole lot better than litigation because it would help keep money in everybody's pockets. And there's, people could, you know, it's all a give and take. I'm not asking for everything to be given to us. I realize that somebody that lives in a residential neighborhood doesn't want to hear noise at 10 o'clock at night with somebody on their porch. I wouldn't either. So there's a lot of things we can do that we can do together. But Mayor Taylor and each member of this board, I just ask you please to reconsider all the options. Don't let this divide our town anymore. Enough damage has already been done. I think we could all work together on this, and I hope so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have someone else?
Good evening. This is Jerry Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So as a business owner in Highlands for 12 years and someone who owns two short-term rentals and R2, I see the significant economic impact that these types of operations give to the town. But I don't think we really need to consider the economic impact at this juncture in this process. I think what really needs to be done is we need to look at the ordinance very specifically and try to understand what it says and what it does not say. I think it's extremely vague. And I think if you go back to the prior UDO that was in place 11 years ago, it specifically referenced short-term rentals. It used those words. The current UDO does not reference short-term rentals anywhere. It talks about a tourist home, which is not a short-term rental by definition of the UDO. And interpret it that way is just on its plain reading wrong. I mean, a tourist home is defined as a bed and breakfast. You have to live on the property. It limits the number of bedrooms. So it's very specific and they're only allowed in R2. So I think you need to really step back, find zoning experts. Look at this ordinance. If you want to pass an ordinance, there's a process. If you want to forbid short-term rentals, there's a process. Not sure that you can, but there is a process. And what happened a month ago is not the process that should have been taken. People have invested a lot of money with the current interpretation of the UDO. And for us to, or for this board to change that interpretation now with limited review, limited outside review, all due respect to Mr. Coward, but I think we need further review of this issue. I mean, the courts across the country have not defined short-term rentals as commercial activity uniformly. So I think there's a lot of legal issues and a lot of money is going to be spent on both sides resolving these legal issues. And we're not even going to get into the economic impact until we can resolve these issues. So I think we need to step back, get some solid interpretation of the current UDO before we move forward with this implementation date of January 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Hello, this is Lynn Luzier calling. First of all, I want to thank all of y'all for your patience and your time with us. And for all the speakers that have said what they wanted to say, and I have to say, I agree with most of them. My family has been on Dog Mountain for 60 years. And I understand both sides of this. I understand people that live there and they want their peace and quiet. And I also understand those that want short-term rentals. Our family has short-term rentals because we're all getting older and we're not able to go up there. And we can have short-term rentals, and that's what we want. We want to pass this home down to our other family members and keep it in the family. But if we have to stop short-term rentals, we're going to be unable to keep the home. And that's upsetting to my family. I just want to reiterate that I do feel for the other people who live on the mountains in those areas and they have people staying up all hours of the night. I feel like that we can find a way to come together on both sides and maybe put something in place for these leases that will be more concrete on what these tourists can do and not do in these rental homes so that we can protect the quiet times that these people that live on the homes want to have. So I understand both sides, but I do feel like that it's really going to impact more than just the economy. I mean, it really is going to impact the revenue for a lot of people, but it's just going to impact Highlands. It's just going to deplete what was always there. I was there when the Red Barn was there. I remember when that was just a field. And I just love Highlands, but I do want the other side to have what they want to. You know, I want them to have their peace and quiet as well. But I don't want the short-term rentals to go. I just think that we can put something in place where everyone can be happy and crack down on it somehow. You know, I just, I hope that we can come together as a town and figure out a better way to do this. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Bun Cannon. And thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us. Literally, I owe my life to the, some of the members of the Highlands community. Three years ago, I was in Highlands. We had purchased a house, not to rent out, but for our family. I, we've been coming to Highlands for 25 years, my wife and I, and we were finally able to purchase a home on Foreman Road. Unfortunately, I was bitten by a rattlesnake and the wonderful members of Highlands Fire and Rescue and Cassiers Glenville Fire and Rescue saved me from certain death. And I feel obligated to them, to repay them for their efforts and what they've done for me. And I will do that for the rest of my life. I'm not a trust fund baby. I wasn't given property there. I've worked very hard for what I've accomplished and purchased a home without any desire to ever rent it out. And unfortunately, that home caught fire a year later. And they were not able to save it. Our plans are to rebuild there. We would love to rebuild there as a home that we could retire in. But in the meantime, I had, we wanted to continue to utilize Highlands, so we purchased two homes on Ryle Road. One was currently being used as a VRBO and the other one is dilapidated and needs significant updating and repair. I have committed to spend a quarter of a million dollars to outfit that home. And ideally, those homes would be rental homes until my children are capable of taking those homes over and keeping them up themselves. Most STRs, I don't believe, make a tremendous amount of money off their properties. I think it is just a way to help pay for property taxes, the cable bills, the utility bills, contribute to the fire and rescue. But I've only rented the home one time, and that was to an older couple from Florida for 30 days. They came up, they were in their 80s, and they were looking for a place to rent for a month. You know, our plans are not to rent to just anyone. We let our pastor stay there with his family at no charge. I just feel like, you know, the the opportunity to work together as property owners and with the town could be, could be an opportunity for everyone to come together with the right ordinance in place and the right penalties in place for those that do take advantage of the situation. But my goal is to give back to Highlands as much as they have given to me because literally I owe the town my life. And so thank you guys for listening to me and I really appreciate, really appreciate you giving this serious thought and giving everybody the opportunity to make their points heard.
Thank you.
That was our last one.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda would be to review and approve the agenda. Do we have any proposed changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to, when we go into executive session, I'd like to discuss the dark fiber construction contract. I was provided that this week after several months, and I've got a few questions to Jay.
What's the board's feeling about this? We are going to talk about the dark fiber in just a minute. We will address that, but this closed session was announced for discussion with our attorney on issues of short-term rentals.
With all due respect, I've been asking to see the contract for four months and it just came Tuesday.
We, none of us, Mark, have seen the contract. It will be coming out and you'll have ample time to review that contract before any action is taken.
No, sir, I'm talking about the construction contract that was approved in June of 19.
We have, we have provided all the documents we can for you and your attorney on that. And we are, we've electronically given it to you and we've also let you come and look at the actual documents.
Yes, sir. I have some, just two questions that I want to ask Jay in executive session that are in the best interest of the town.
Okay.
Construction contract.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with Commissioner Hein being able to present his questions to our attorney during closed session.
All right. Any second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, and I will go and ask each commissioner their vote. Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hein?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. We have an agenda. Thank you. The next item would be to the approval of the July 15th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item 15, and this is very important today. I asked that, we asked the Stewart Company to provide the recommended zoning amendments they proposed. And I thought we had an agreement to do that.
Okay. So you want that to state that you requested that?
Yes, sir, and there was one other.
I certainly don't remember.
We, we talked about, just to, and it's on YouTube if you want to watch it. We talked about making it a high priority and not a mid-level priority. And we talked about how they made specific recommendations. It's in the comprehensive plan. They've made recommendations to address all of this. And I think we ought to ask Josh, to ask him for a proposal and to do it. I talked to Josh about it the next day and he said, we couldn't, we couldn't do it because it would cost more money and the town would have to approve it. But I specifically asked that we ask them to provide the zoning amendments they proposed. And I certainly thought everybody agreed with that.
I don't remember that.
Neither do I.
We certainly can put that change in the minutes that you made that request.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's one other thing that I asked for. It's item 16. I asked for the contract completion date for the dark fiber project and the amount of liquidated damages.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So noted. Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified by Commissioner Hein?
I slowly move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? I do not have a second here on this. Would someone want to make another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of July 15th as presented. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of July 15th as presented.
Okay. Second that.
Second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Let me go ahead and call the vote on this. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote? Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Absolutely not.
All right. We've got four yes and one no. All right. Let us now move on to the approval of the August 2nd special meeting minutes. Do we have any changes or corrections to those minutes?
I'll move we approve them as written.
All right. Do I have a second? Okay, let me go ahead and call this vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote? Commissioner Callaway, your vote? Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane, your vote? Thank you. All right, the next item will be reports, and we start with the mayor's report. So let me just go over a couple of items. One thing I wanted to do is to thank Dennis DeWolf, who has served on our planning board for a number of years, and also he had served as a commissioner, so he has a distinguished history of serving this community. I want to thank him for his service as he leaves the, the planning board. He will be missed, but he has contributed so many things to this community, and we appreciate that. Other thing is, you will notice that the Harrison Construction Company has been working downtown. What they are doing, they're redoing some of the curbs at the intersections. The state requires this, and the state will be paying for it to bring those curbs in, in sidewalks up to ADA current ADA standards. Another thing that, I've got some feedback about some of the roads leaving and coming into Highlands, especially with the rain and so forth. The need for maintaining some of the, the washout ditch areas. I talked with Mark Hill this week of DOT. For example, there will be working, if they haven't already started addressing the the road conditions on 64 from here to, to Cashers. So he said that they would be doing that maintenance. I think they fell behind really because of the Haywood County Pigeon River flooding. A lot of the DOT people had to be diverted to that particular disaster relief effort. And then the other thing is our mask requirements. I checked with the public health. They sent out a message today. Right now, we have 420 active cases in Macon County of COVID. That has been going up. I think last week it was 300 and something. That positivity rate is still high as well as across the state. I know some folks have been concerned about the forcefulness of our, our ordinance and, and requiring people to wear masks. Our goal is to try to get as many people as possible to voluntarily comply with, with that. We have had the police talking with some of the businesses to encourage them to step up their, you know, requirements for people coming in, into their stores with masks. And I appreciate all of the citizens who are wearing masks. And I will just say this, if, if they see a store where they don't think the clerks and people are wearing the mask, they have the option of not, you know, supporting that, that business. So we're still in that effort to try to get as many people as possible to wear masks. And of course, we're trying to get as many people as possible to get vaccinated. So that is basically my report, and now I will turn it over to the commissioners and any committee reports that we might have.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank Kay for her suggestion, and we certainly have to find a way to work together and work through this issue. And I'll, I'll stay friends. I do want to also mention unfortunately, I counted all of the, all the positions that were advertised at the hospital, and there are 40. Some of them are part-time, 40 positions at our hospital. And we have a neighbor who, who has COVID. She had retreated as an outpatient. It was successful, and we, we really depend on that hospital, and we've got to, we've got to support him everywhere we possibly can, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports by commissioners? Hearing none. The next report would be our town manager, Josh Ward.
I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. An update on the fire department. And most of you have probably saw lately, the elevator shaft is complete. They will, they're also complete with the wall dividing the finished area from the bay area. They're going to be pouring the slab for that finished area next week. They've also finished up the retaining walls around the sides and around the rear of the property. Now, those were backfilled as well this week and seated down. It looks really good. I think it's going to be easily maintained with, with mowers and weeders there. They put some, some gravel down in the rear. They've also hauled a load of, the first load of steel has, has been brought to the property. Some brick are going to be delivered next week, so it's coming along, so we're excited about that. To give an update on the tower. Matt Schuler had talked last week about the tower and Chuck Cooper's request. He did say that he spoke with Verizon Wireless, and they were looking at, he had asked that they move down two feet on that tower. And they're looking into it to get him an answer on that. Also, Mr. Cooper, as we talked last time, there's potential for him to move up two feet as well, so they're in, working with that. Also, Matt has got a quote coming for the lightning rod that Mr. Cooper has suggested at the last meeting. That is from a tower company that was recommended by our communications company. Also, Matt has been speaking with the Engineered Tower Solutions for a price on a safety inspection on the tower that Commissioner Hane had mentioned. We did identify the cable that was in the ladder going up the, the tower. It was actually our fiber that was going up there. It had broke loose from a couple of the connection points, and our guys went back up there that next day and corrected that. So that's an update on the tower. Also, the fiber contract with Hotwire. Hotwire's been experiencing some, some issues with COVID. And the CEO has reviewed the contract, and we have that in hand, and our, our attorneys are looking over that one more time before we get that out to the board. So hopefully, that'll be coming soon. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you. All right, the next item would be the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions about the consent agenda that was in the pack?
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let me just then call for the vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioners, Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote? And Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven, a request for a public hearing. Michael Mathis, it's concerning the Ellis property annexation. Mr. Mathis?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the petition really hasn't changed. A petition a few months ago was submitted for an annexation into the town of Highlands by Mr. Wiley Ellis. And Gibby, Mr. Ellis is on this call. If you could just transfer him over if they have any questions. Apparently, Mr. Ellis owns a 44.36 acre tract that is contiguous with the Ravenel subdivision. Attached to this memo is a product, is a proposed zoning map showing the subject property, a survey by L. Stephen Foster and Associates, a letter addressed to the town of Highlands from Attorney Fred Jones finding Mr. Ellis's position, and an aerial zoning map image showing the subject property in relation to town limits. The only thing that has changed from the packet that is included this month, from last month's meeting, is the official proposed zoning map, and Carlton or GIS mapping personnel put that one out for this meeting. The planning board did review this item on August 23rd, 2021, and their recommendation was to, was that if the property is annexed into the town of Highlands, that it be zoned R1 residential, which is what is contiguous to. The recommendation that I have today is to set a public hearing for, one, the annexation, and, two, the initial zoning of the property if it were to be annexed. And those would be, the public hearing would be set for next month's meeting, and that's all I have.
All right. Do we have any questions of Michael or Mr. Ellis?
I move we set a public hearing for the October regular commissioners meeting for the annexation and for the zoning proposal for the potential annexation.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let me go and, and call for the vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. So we will have that public hearing for the next meeting. Item number eight, chamber events request. Kay McKen. Okay, we'll turn it over to you.
There we go. I think I'm unmuted now. Let's talk about something fun. A Christmas parade. I know it's September, but it's going to be here really soon. We would like to ask if we could start the parade about 30 minutes earlier. We currently start at 11:00, and it's a real push to get everybody down the street and moved off the street by 12 o'clock as we need to, because as you guys know, it's a highway and, you know, we need to open it up and et cetera. So if we could start it at 10:30, it would give us a little more time, and what we're hoping for is that we can actually bring in some more bands. We're going to reach out to them. As it is, it's pretty hard to do because we have a hard time getting, you know, Santa through at the end by that 12 o'clock mark. So just thoughts on starting a little earlier for the Christmas parade?
Okay.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, and I had talked with Chief Pollan, and she didn't see any issue with it. You know, just wanted to run it past you guys. So that'll be great. We'll be reaching out, trying to getting some more bands. So another thing that I had mentioned, but it's been a couple of months since I mentioned it, was that we were working on trying to develop maybe like a snow festival, something really fun in the park at Kelsey Hutchinson Park. We've identified January 29th is a possible date. It's usually a really cold weekend. So we would bring in someone that would blow the park full of snow. And I sent a picture earlier today that we got from the company we've been talking to. I don't know if they can pull it up and you can see it, but it has, there it goes. The top part of the picture, it was interesting. They sent us this, and they said, you know, they would put this merry-go-round in. I'm like, really? So they do it, as you can see, with the tubes on there so that children and adults can ride it. We sent them a map of Kelsey Hutchinson Park and just said, same park, this is approximate sizes, what might it look like? There you go. So this is just kind of a general idea of what we might do. You know, have, you know, and you can imagine all of this is covered in snow. And so there's like a little slide area that apparently will also hold us adults that are still children. The merry-go-round, like what you saw, and then they have an area they kind of petition off, like for the little guys, you know, so that they don't get run over by the big guys. There's even potential, if we wanted, we could have like smores at the fireplace and that sort of thing. I've spoken to Lester about this. And the concern he expressed was, you know, would there be any damage to the grass areas? So I'm, I, I love working with Lester. He does a great job. And I'm happy, you know, we could go out pre-event and take some pictures and really check, you know, the grass and everything, and then do that post-event. And of course, if there was any damage, it would be, you know, our responsibility. I also spoke with Hank about it, just in the use of the park, and he thought it sounded like a lot of fun. And of course, our ice skating will be open, so it would just a really fun weekend. All the kids would be out, it'd be on a Saturday, and just a lot of fun to come together as a community. And, you know, we'll probably be paying for snow, and God will provide us with lots of it. So we, we'll see about all of that, but we just thought it'd be something fun when it's a little slower here in Highlands to do something like that. So any concerns or thoughts that you have on that? And thanks, guys, for putting up the picture.
Okay. Do we need a, a motion to approve the snow festival? What's the board's pleasure on this?
I have a question for Josh. Is there any added liability there that you know of? Have we checked with our insurance company?
We haven't checked, you know, on this event, but everything is cut.
Okay, and, you know, I would also check to see, we use Wyatt Insurance, and I would check to see if we would need to have any event insurance, and certainly we would get a certificate of liability from the company that we're hiring. We always do that.
So just a question, is it just Saturday or Saturday and Sunday?
Well, we thought we would start out with just one day. I mean, if we put snow in there, and, you know, it's gonna last, well, unless we have a heat wave in January, it should last more than 24 hours. So, you know, if there's a possibility that people can still come into the park on Sunday, that's great. This is all new, so we really don't know how long it's gonna last. But that's a, that's a good question.
So, so you want the street closed for both days?
Yeah, so what we would need to do, I'm sorry, Amy, that's an excellent question, and I had it on my notes. So what we need to do is to close off the park, kind of like we do for the concerts. And, because they'll have to start blowing snow on Friday to build everything up. So we would have to do that, and then, of course, if we're doing it for the one day on Saturday, all the cleanup would have to happen, so it would be closed, you know, still closed off on Sunday. So it'd be like a three-day period if we did a one-day festival.
Okay. So we would need a, a motion to approve the snow festival and approve the street closure for those two days?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. I've seen it done successfully before.
Okay, we've got a got a second. Any further discussion or questions, Kay?
Yeah, Kay, I do have a question. I'm assuming these would be to get the snow in there. There's going to be commercial snow blowers?
Yes, yes. So there's a company that actually does this, usually in colder places than this, but we're going to try it out. And we have actually talked with our local businesses, like the tubing guys down in Scaly and the ski slope over in Sapphire to see if we could hire them to do it, but their equipment really isn't portable, so they can bring it in town. So that's why we reached out and found a company that, this is what they do. They create these festivals.
My, my main concern would be the noise level that those things make. They make a tremendous amount of noise when they're generating snow, and I think if that's going to be done, then it needs to be shut down at a certain time in the evening and not start it up in the morning until a certain time. I just don't want to see them making, making snow all night, Friday night, because everybody in town's going to hear it.
That is a great point, Buzz. Thank you. Certainly, we would stop, you know, at, I think it's 10 o'clock, the ordinance stopped. That is a great point, Buzz. Thank you. Certainly, we would stop, you know, at, I think it's ten o'clock, the ordinance stops us. With that being said, they may have to start, you know, earlier on Fridays, so it may be that we close the park early on Friday, let them get started, you know, that way they can stop by ten AM. And then whenever it's permissible, you know, Saturday morning, if they needed to, you know, add to it or freshen it up or whatever, but that's a really good point.
So how long do they anticipate it taking them to fill it with snow?
You know, I have one of my great staff members has been, you know, having the conversations with them. Our park's pretty big, so that would be something I'd have to come back. You know, we have sent them, you know, the dimensions that we got for the park, so they'd have an idea. But I could certainly come back to you and let you know about how long they think it would take to blow the snow and set everything up.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Hane. Could we move forward with this with the provision that further details concerning noise and everything will be shared with the board at a later date?
Sure.
Well, would you be agreeable to that, to Commissioner Hane?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So agreeable to what? Are we tabling it till we have more information?
Go ahead and give preliminary approval, and that Kay will come back with specific details about the schedule and the, you know, time for making the snow.
I'd like to know what the decibel level of it's going to be, too. Of the noise, because that's a continuous monotone noise for I don't know how many hours.
It's huge, Jamie. I can tell you that.
Okay, I'll check on decibel level.
And find out how many machines they're going to have, too, because it's not going to be just, they're probably going to have three or four machines there.
Yeah, that would make it quicker, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Number of machines and then length of time. I'm making notes so we can get a hold of them.
I would think it'd be better, I agree with Commissioner Steeler, I think it'd be better if we're going to do this to have with the decibel level, unless they have machines that, that put out less decibels than, than ski scaly or, or any of the other ski slopes that I've been to, it'd be better to have multiple machines putting it out for a shorter amount of time.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I can find those, find out those answers.
Okay, make sure the temperature is going to stay below thirty degrees those days, too.
Yeah, I'll put that request in, Brian.
So we have a motion on the floor with the conditions that she'll, Kay will come back and give us the details about the noise level and so forth. Do we want to proceed with the calling the vote to allow the snow festival? What's the feeling of the board?
Mr. Mayor, if we approve it and she comes back, and I'm not saying that, that things would go south. If we approve it now and she comes back with, I mean, she needs either something to go ahead and pull the trigger on this or or not, it seems to me that conditional approval based on what Kay comes back with might be more appropriate than, than approval.
Okay. Commissioner Hane, would you be willing to modify your motion for conditional approval?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And the second, and the second has to.
Yes, and I'll second that.
Okay, let us go ahead and do the vote on this conditional approval. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane, your vote?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Kay, if you'll bring, come back at the next board meeting with that information, the sooner the better. We'll, we'll review that also. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, next, item number nine, Duke Energy update. And our energy consultant from Nova Energy, Kevin O'Donnell, will give us a update on our Duke Energy contract. Kevin? Are you there, Kevin?
There I am.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Excuse me. It's been a long time since I've been able to get up to you. A lot has happened in the past year and a half, so I wanted to, well, really a year. So I wanted to give y'all an update as to where we are and how things are going to proceed going forward. I'm going to attempt to, well, Rebecca, can you share my screen or allow me to share my screen?
There we go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Boy, I tell you. Okay, I'm going to start off on the slide one here. This is just details of, you know, y'all know who I am and everything. Can you advance that slide, Rebecca? There you go. Thank you. Quick updates, and I promise not to take a lot of y'all's time. We did receive a refund of about half a million dollars from Duke. On our twenty twenty true-up, it was due to an over collection in the rates for twenty twenty due to COVID and other components that Duke deems to be confidential. I had a long talk with Duke rep today on that, Richard Knight. And actually had to send this, well, I wanted to send this presentation to him to make certain that there, Duke wouldn't get too uptight about anything I said here, because I didn't want to get either the town or myself in trouble. We also received another three hundred sixty thousand dollars in refunds. Again, Duke considers those items to be confidential. We, our municipal university group, we have joined with the town of Forest City, Western Carolina University. They're all clients of my company, Nova. We've also joined with a few municipalities in South Carolina, as well as the town of Dallas. And every year, we audit the rate formula to make certain that there's nothing going on that we don't agree. And every year, we have arguments with, well, every year, we have disagreements with Duke. We, we challenge some of their positions and, you know, we ultimately agreed to a settlement in regard to some past audits, and our rates are lowered approximately forty thousand dollars a year because of that. Can you get the next slide there, Rebecca? So, big question. What do we do with the refunds? My recommendation is we save that money and use it as rate stabilization fund. And Rebecca, if you go to the next slide, I will tell you why. First of all, the issue regarding coal ash, that's now been settled. The North Carolina Supreme Court remanded the case to the Utilities Commission. Duke and the Public Staff, which is the consumer advocate of North Carolina, settled the case, and refunds were sent out. Again, Duke wants the amount paid to Highlands to be confidential. But we're still going to have to pay coal ash as we move forward. Okay, so in a round nutshell, basically, the resolution of the case amounts to consumers paying about eighty-eight percent of the coal ash cost. And Duke stockholders will pick up the other amount. That's a ballpark figure. Because no one at this point knows the total cost of what the coal ash radiation is ultimately going to be. So, you know, we got some liabilities coming up down the road on that one. Next one, thank you, Rebecca. Y'all may have seen Dix try to get some legislation passed in North Carolina. I'm in the middle of that fight. There's a link I provided there on your screen. And I, I can easily send that link to all of y'all if you want to see it, but it's about an article about textile companies in North Carolina. Speaking for the General Assembly about these rate increase, what it's going to do to their business. That estimate of fifty percent, that came from me. I got a lot of heat from Duke on that, but it's accurate. Other folks have come to my defense since then. But when you think about that, you know, that's a fifty percent increase in your power rates over the next ten years for Duke retail customers. And that's probably in the low end. So one thing is known for certain, Duke's rates are going up. And the good news is wholesale costs will not rise as much because we don't take distribution from Duke. And a lot of their cost increase has to do with the grid modernization efforts. So our wholesale cost of power will not go up that much. Probably, well, go to the next slide there, Rebecca, thank you. I think I've said down there that on the fourth bullet point, I'm estimating our wholesale cost of power from Duke to increase two to three percent per year through twenty twenty seven. But we have a contract with Duke until twenty twenty eight. We'll start looking for power supplies in twenty twenty four. We'll have a pretty good group together that I'll be working with. So going over the course of the next year, the third bullet point there talks about natural gas. If y'all have read the Wall Street Journal or any of the financial publications, you know that natural gas is going to be pretty tight this year because of the lack of drilling in twenty twenty due to COVID and the low inventory. So we're going to see a spike in our commodity costs this winter. Fuel, oil, natural gas, and since Duke uses a tremendous amount of natural gas and is going to use even more going forward, then they're going to see a pretty significant increase in the commodity cost, and therefore, we will see an increase in the cost of our power. Next slide there, thank you. Wild cards in the industry. Carbon tax. We don't know what's going to come out of Washington. I've heard some folks talking about a carbon tax. I've also heard legislative mandates. There's an article in today's Wall Street Journal that I actually heard about earlier in the week whereby if a load-serving entity, such as the town of Highlands, did not start increasing their clean energy by four percent per year, then there was going to be a penalty assessed to the tune of a hundred fifty dollars a megawatt hour. That's a massive penalty. It looks like the folks in Washington are beginning to realize that may not be too palatable with folks, and they're beginning to backtrack a little bit on that. That's part of the reconciliation bill. RTO, there are efforts to bring competition into the wholesale markets, so more competition to the wholesale markets. I'm obviously a supporter of RTOs, regional transmission organizations, meaning that we would have a single rate to buy power from states like Virginia and Maryland and Georgia and South Carolina, assuming we all join the same RTO. Competition is a good thing. If you're looking for lower prices, it can also allow us to buy cleaner power if that's what the town wants to do. I have a lot of industry now that don't want to buy power from Duke anymore, but they're retail customers, so they don't have any choice. They'd rather go green, but they can't because North Carolina doesn't allow retail competition. Speaking of that, there are efforts underway to allow competition in retail markets in the Carolinas. South Carolina's doing a study. Doesn't look likely it's going to happen here in North Carolina anytime soon. But that's a wild card. So, Mayor, I hope I didn't take too much time. That's all I have. Y'all have my contact information there. Going forward, things are looking pretty good for the town. We've got, you know, a significant amount of refunds coming from Duke because, you know, we've overpaid in the past. And we are continuing to stay on top of the wholesale rate formula. I do want you to know that at the beginning of two thousand and nineteen, really, two thousand and eighteen, no, excuse me, two thousand and nineteen, we did lose a number of our wholesale customer groups, so therefore, the cost of auditing has been increasing, so I may have to increase my cost a small amount in the coming fiscal year. It's not going to be a significant amount, you know, maybe twenty, twenty-five percent or something like that to cover the cost, the increased cost of the audits. So, you know, you're talking about two, three thousand dollars a year extra, something like that to cover the cost of those audits we have to do. But in any event, thank you for hearing me tonight. I'll take any questions, anybody has any.
Well, let me, let me start off, Kevin. When you, when you talk about the, the refunds we're getting, which is rather substantial, you're, you're proposing to create a rate stabilization fund that we would hold that money in balance. So as you predict increases from Duke at two and three and four percent in the coming years, we'd use that money to hold our rates stable and avoid rate increases. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Mayor. I, there is nothing that I dislike more than going before a town board and raising rates. It's unpleasant for everybody. But we know for a fact our costs are going to increase going forward. We know that for a fact. With the movement towards greening our electricity, I promise you, those costs are increasing. So let's use that money and create a rate stabilization fund.
Okay. Any other questions of Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, what does it mean, start looking for power supplies? What does that mean to me?
It means that twenty twenty four, beginning of twenty twenty four, I'm going to put Highlands and Forest City, one of my towns out east, and probably two other municipalities together. Take that total load into the open market, because we're wholesale customers. We can shop for power. So we can, we can buy power from whoever we want. As an example, Western Carolina University is leaving Duke at the end of this year, and they're going to Carolina Power Partners. The Western Carolina University has a retail electric system off-campus. They serve a small bit on campus as well, but primarily off-campus. They're a wholesale customer, so they're allowed by law, Energy Policy Act of nineteen ninety-six, to shop the market, be free to do what they want. So they exercise that right. They're leaving Duke at the end of this year. They won't be doing it unless they were going to get lower-cost power. They're buying the power from the Kings Mountain Energy Center, which is run by Carolina Power Partners. They, along with Concord, Kings Mountain, Black Creek, LeCom, Stanton, Sharpsburg, let me see, Greenwood, South Carolina, and Camden, South Carolina, and New River Light and Power, which is owned by App State University. They are all taking customers now from Carolina Power Partners out of the Kings Mountain Energy Center. So we will be talking to Carolina Power Partners. We'll be talking to Duke. We'll be talking to the Southern Power Company, which owns several plants here in the Carolinas. And we will be getting bids, and then I will bring everything back to y'all and say, do you want to do this or not? Here are the pros and cons. Here are the economics of it. And y'all make the decision. And if you decide to move forward, then I'll work with y'all to get all the agreements done and get the proper telemetry equipment in place, which is fiber that needs to be run to our leader for, for Duke. That will just keep us a real-time check with the power plant down there in Kings Mountain or wherever we go to. But I, I've, I've done thirty-some wholesale deals over the past twenty-five years. So, and, you know, Western Carolina will come online at the end of this year, so we know what to do. It's just, it's a big step for the board. You know, you've been with Duke for sixty-some years, and I'm not recommending you, or seventy, eighty years, whatever it is. I'm not recommending here that you leave Duke. All I'm going to do is present you the options and give you the pros and cons and answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Kevin? Any other questions of Kevin? Do we need to have a motion to, to actually, um, create this rate stabilization fund at this time? Or do we need to just process this longer? What's the pleasure of the board?
I, I thought we already had one. Is that, was that just a temporary one for, in the past? Uh, Josh?
I don't, I don't recall one currently. And I did want to clarify one other thing. Uh, part of that refund was actually a credit for our July bill. So I don't know the exact amount, but it was around a quarter of a million dollars, uh, that was our wholesale bill for July. And it was credited off that. So it's not quite as much, uh, as, as Kevin laid out there, but it is, it is substantial.
So it's not money in the hand, though, that we can actually put in a stabilization account?
Correct. There, there will be a large amount. I don't think we've received the, the 560,000 yet, but the majority of the, uh, the first one he mentioned, the 360 was a credit on, on a bill. And I think there's another small part that'll be a credit later as well, but there will be a large part that I, you know, definitely will need to, need to go somewhere. There's also a discussion that Kevin and I had about coal ash. We've been paying coal ash for a number of years now, which we take, you know, basically have on each bill. So there's a question about whether to use this money to pay toward coal ash. The only problem is this is not going to, this is not going to pay for all the coal ash that we owe. So it might defer, uh, you know, some of those, uh, fees on our bills for the next few years, but then we'll have to reinstate those again, which we feel would be very, uh, troublesome and, and confusing to the customer. So I think we need to keep that on there and, and, you know, use this money for what Kevin's saying. And if, and if at some point, uh, we're not, we're not using it in the future, maybe we, we pay off the coal ash when, when we have, uh, a smaller amount to pay. Kevin, do you want to mention anything on that?
Yeah, let, let me clarify. Uh, Josh is exactly right. Uh, all, what I'm talking about here in these refunds are really credits against our power bills. So what's going to happen is we're going to show a higher net income for our fiscal year 2021 and then 2122, than we would otherwise see because of these refunds. So when I'm talking about, you know, saving that money, what I'm saying is that when we see our net income rising higher than expected, in the fund statements for 2021 and 2122, that we use that balance or some portion of that balance to put aside in a rate stabilization fund, to then use as we move forward. But Josh is exactly right. Those are credits against our bills. And yeah, in terms of the coal ash, um, anything we can do to stabilize, uh, uh, all that is incredibly important.
Josh, do you want to bring a recommendation back to the next meeting or do you want to do this tonight?
I think it might be good if the Finance Committee, uh, looked at it and took the information that, that Kevin has given us tonight. And look at how we can best do that for rate stabilization.
Sounds good. I think that's a good, good plan. Any other questions of, um, of Kevin? Hearing none. Kevin, we appreciate you coming and briefing us on the Duke Energy. And I know we'll be in contact with you much more as we move toward that, um, 2024 implementation of, of looking at alternative enters, energy sources as we have to, create a new contract in 2028. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Y'all take care and have a good night.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, item number 10, closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 143 dash 318 point 11, a three attorney-client privilege. And according to the amended agenda, we will be reviewing short-term rental issues and the fiber contract issue. Um, let me just read a, a statement that I want to make here about this closed session. You know, I have signed a fee schedule agreement with Attorney Craig Justice of Van Winkle Law Farm to review our current residential ordinances related to short-term rentals and related matters. He will provide legal advice to the town board, um, um, as the board reviews the issue of short-term residential zones. Um, with that said, I do not anticipate any board action tonight on this matter. This is our first, um, meeting with, uh, Mr. Justice. Um, if we do take action, we will post that on the website as soon as possible and send it out to the, um, Sunshine List. And I wanted to just make that clear as we now move into, um, to this closed session. Do I have a, a motion? Yes.
I just want to disclose that we have an accessory dwelling unit, uh, over our garage. We rented it once before, three years ago, as a short-term rental through the Tucker Agency. And we always get calls from brides, but we have a long-term rental here.
Okay, thank you.
Done it before.
Appreciate that.
Anybody else would want to mention that, uh, this would be the time?
Okay. Alright, with that said, do I have a motion that we go into closed session?
To move.
Duck it.
Let me go ahead and now call for the vote. Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway? Commissioner Steele? And Commissioner Hane? Okay, thank you. We're now going to go into closed session. Um, I know our, our moderator might need some time to, to put us into the closed session, um, mode. So why don't we take about a, um, it's 8:40. Won't we, um, come back at 8:45? Will that be okay with you, Jay?
Sure.
Okay, well, we'll, let's take a break and, and at 8:45, we will start the closed session. And our moderator is Gibby or Rebecca? Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Gibby? Is, is Craig on the, um?
He is. He is. I'm working on it.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. We'll reconvene in four minutes at, at 8:45.
Hey, Josh, I got a question here on, my record button is blinking red. Does that mean it's on?